City of Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. At this time, I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I would like Karen Finador, the Commissioner liaison, to please call roll.
Planning Commissioner Laquisha Veal.
Planning Commissioner Laquisha Veal, present.
Commissioner Byron Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, here.
Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt.
Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt, here.
Commissioner Lynn Banks.
Commissioner Lynn Banks, present.
Commissioner Ken Billups.
Commissioner Ken Billups, present.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel. Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Travis Graham, here.
Commissioner Susan Stokkenberry.
Commissioner Susan Stokkenberry, here.
Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, here.
Commissioner Ashley Hose.
Commissioner Ashley Hose, here.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel. Planning Chair Chad Sanderson.
Chair Chad Sanderson is here.
Okay, we also have Mike Mallon, Director of Community Development, Matt Wright, Assistant Director of Community Development, Nathan Jury, Senior Planner, Adam Hilgadick, City Engineer, Jackie Summer, City Attorney, Jerry Taylor, Councilmember District One, Mayor Protem, and Jim Lee Cock, Republic's Denographer.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to read the public hearing procedures because we have a public hearing this evening. So I will open the public hearing and call for exhibits from the city attorney. I'll ask for the staff's presentation. I'll ask for the applicant to make a presentation if they would like to do so. We'll ask for witnesses in favor. We'll ask for witnesses opposed. We'll have questions and general discussion, and then we'll close the public hearing and then consider a vote. I'm going to read through the agenda items. So Agenda One is to call the order and consent agenda. Item Two is public hearing conditional use permit with alternative development standards CUP 0121-7643 Phillips 66. Item Three is public hearing amended plan unit development concept plan PUDC 0121-7646 Whataburger. Item Four is preliminary plat PP 0121-7647 Whataburger. Item Five is preliminary plat PP 0121-7642 Chapman Ridge. Items Six is Plan Unit Development or Plan Development Final Plan Site Plan Design Review PDFS 0121-7645 The Edison at Blue Springs. And Item Seven is final plat PF 0121-7622 The Edison at Blue Springs. Then Item Eight is Other Business, and Item Nine is Adjournment. So at this time, I would, the first item is the consent agenda for the meeting minutes of February eighth, two thousand, or twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Billups.
I move, this is Commissioner Billups, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
And Commissioner Honeycutt.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Commissioner Stokkenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Hose, aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Commissioner Laquisha Veal, aye.
And Chad Sanders, or Chair Sanderson.
Chair Chad Sanderson, aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item Two is the public hearing conditional use permit for, with alternative development standards for Phillips 66. The applicant has requested this be continued to the Monday, March eighth, twenty twenty-one Planning Agenda or Planning Commission Agenda. I would ask for a motion to continue. Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to continue the planning, public hearing conditional use permit with alternative development standards CUP dash zero one dash two one dash seven six four three for Phillips 66 per the applicant's request till Monday, March the eighth, Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. I'll recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
I'd like to second that motion to continue.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Commissioner Stokkenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Hose, aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Commissioner Veal, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion is carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. The next items on the agenda are Items Three and Four, the amended PUD Concept Plan PUDC 0121-7646 and preliminary plat PP 0121-7647 for Whataburger. We'll hear both these items and vote on them separately. I'm going to open the public hearing for the amended PUD Concept Plan and call for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February sixth, twenty twenty-one. Four, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title Four Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, two thousand fourteen Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Thank you, and I would now call on Mr. Jury to present for the city.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson, Planning Commission. Before you tonight is a request to approve an amendment to the original Blazer Center PUD or Planned Unit Development Concept Plan and a preliminary plat for property located at the northwest corner of Seven Highway and South Outer Road. This roughly one point one five acre property is ZONE GBPD, which stands for General Business Planned Unit Development, as you can see on the zoning map here. On the aerial, it's an existing developed site. The applicant, Kalen Acres, with MS Consultants on behalf of the property owner, Metcalf Ninety-One BLBL LLC, desires to demolish this existing building, the former Winstead's Restaurant, and construct a roughly thirty-two hundred square foot fast food restaurant for Whataburger. In general, the proposed building, I'll pull up the site plan here. The proposed building is located on roughly the western half of the property. A double drive-through exists or is located, proposed to be located between the building and South Outer to the west. The property, or the proposed building does encroach on an existing easement in the southwest corner of the building. This easement must be vacated prior to final plat if, if the building is to be located in this specific spot. Parking is generally located on the eastern half of the site. The two drives on Seven Highway and one drive on South Outer will remain, but they will be slightly altered and or relocated on their respective streets. Roads, sidewalk improvements along Seven and South Outer are required by MoDOT and Public Works. Additional right-of-way at the far southern corner of the property is, is being shown to be dedicated, existing right-of-way to be, or new right-of-way to be dedicated to accommodate these public improvements to Seven and South Outer. The proposed building, I'm pulling up those images. The proposed building is largely composed of brick and glass below that awning level. The, there's metal above, as you can see in these pictures here. The proposed building does meet the, or exceed the minimum standards for city building design requirements. Going back to the site plan for some of the PUD modification requests. As allowed through this PUD Concept Plan process, the applicant is requesting three modifications from the city's code. First, development, the proposed development reduces required buffer along Seven as well as along South Outer from the fifteen-foot buffer as required to a ten-foot buffer along Seven Highway and a six-foot buffer along South Outer. There are a few locations that this has further reduced, some more slight than others next to the trash enclosure and the existing access between the gas station to the north and this lot that has to remain. But the one location that staff is particularly concerned about is the proposed reduction in the southwest corner of the drive-through lane. It's reduced down to about one foot. If I can zoom in a little bit more here. Roughly one foot away from the property line is where the proposed curbing will be for this drive-through. Staff is concerned that this is not enough space for landscaping to grow, to shield headlights from shining onto South Outer. But the applicant has proposed and calls out here that they're proposing to install a thirty-six foot, or thirty-six inch tall, a three-foot tall landscape wall to help shield the, the headlights from shining on the South Outer. Staff believes that this does alleviate our concern. Secondly, the development does propose thirty-four parking spaces in total, which exceeds the maximum of twenty parking spaces allowed by code. The developer, Whataburger, stated that this increase is necessary to accommodate their business model. Staff does believe that it is necessary to provide the amount of parking needed by each individual use and thus supports this request. The third modification being requested through the PUD, or PUD Concept Plan process is that code does prohibit lights from being located in the front yard setback. Applicant is requesting to waive this requirement as Whataburger will run a twenty-four hour operation. Lighting is necessary, and, and they have stated lighting is necessary to provide customer safety. They do propose to provide shielding on the lights to reduce any potential glare onto the adjacent roadways. Staff recommends approval of this modification as well, except for one location near that southwest corner of the drive-through again, that one of the light poles is partially located onto the proposed right-of-way. So there is one caveat that all, all proposed lights must be completely located on private property. As far as the preliminary plat goes, the lot, the proposed lot meets all size requirements. The public improvements easements and dedications are all shown or conditioned as required by code, Public Works, and MoDOT. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the PUD Concept Plan with four conditions and the preliminary plat with five conditions, and I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Are there any questions for staff at this time from the commissioners?
Commissioner Kradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Thank you, Chair. This may be a question for Public Works. My question is twofold. I have some concern about stormwater improvements. My concerns are about the usability and safety of the road traffic at the intersection of Seven Highway and Mott at the traffic signal. Here amid a heavy downpour during a rainstorm may give rise to hazardous conditions. Under stormwater, could you explain what is meant in the narrative that states no detention or water quality best management practices will be required by the project due to the reduction of impervious area? Is there some type of work going to be imposed here to, to prevent flooding? Could you also elaborate on what is meant by the dedication of the drainage easement over the existing stormwater infrastructure? And how is this expected to help?
Yes, I can speak to that. This is Adam Hilgadick, City Engineer. So the first question was with regard to the requirement being waived and maybe exempt is more of an appropriate term in this case for detention or stormwater BNP's. The previous site, or the site as it is right now, is almost entirely paved with asphalt and covered with a building. And the proposed site will actually reduce the amount of pavement. It'll be more vegetated and grassy and landscaped areas. So per the adopted design standards, APWA fifty-six hundred, which is the stormwater design standard that the city utilizes, this, this development is not required to, because they're reducing the impervious area and because they're, they're adding green space, they're actually exempt from detention for stormwater. And then the second component is with regard to existing infrastructure. We have some curb inlets and, and junction boxes for the storm infrastructure that's shown. Mr. Jury indicated earlier that, that additional right-of-way would be required with improvements to Seven Highway and South Outer Road. And with that additional right-of-way acquisition, the, the storm line, which is in the ground right now, will, will be slightly, well, the storm, we're going to ask for a small easement which will basically grant access to maintain the existing storm. It's, it's not a hundred percent accurately shown. The, the location of the inlets and the junction box are shown faded back in a, in a dashed pattern with ST on this, just south of the curb line. But in fact, that manhole where there's three lines coming in and then a curb inlet, that's where the actual line runs. So in essence, we're just dedicating an easement over the top of that storm line in the event that we need to get in and, and do any maintenance or replacement. So I guess in terms of stormwater, that easement really won't have any impact on the way that this area sheds or collects or conveys stormwater. It's more of a preventative, it's more of a precautionary item on our part to ensure that we have the right to be on their property as, as it will in, in the event that we need to add a, or do any maintenance. And, and part of that is this was just not shown on the previous plat. So we're including that in this new plat, the easement.
Well, thank you for answering that. Do you think that there's any improvement going to be done there at that intersection in terms of the flooding?
The existing storm infrastructure on Seven Highway will remain. There will be, I, I'm not, I don't believe there's any additional storm inlets proposed with this development on, on the MoDOT right-of-way or on the city's right-of-way. So I, I do believe that the applicant is showing some inlets on their property which are private. I'm not aware of any existing inlets on the, on the property as it stands right now. So any surface water may be captured prior to it reaching the MoDOT right-of-way and inundating this area. The applicant may be able to speak more to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
All right, so my, my concern is more kind of a design concern. If you could leave this map up. So you can see where the proposed, like where the drive-through lanes are going to be. There's two of them in that picture. If you look, going off of looking at other restaurants in town, how busy they are and how much their vehicles wrap around the building, looking at this design that's coming right off of Seven Highway where you, where you pull into the building, that's going right into that drive-through lane, there just doesn't seem to be a lot of area for, you know, with how busy and how popular Whataburger is going to be. What, I mean, this might be something for the applicant. But I, my concern is that there's not going to be enough room for wraparound cars like you see at McDonald's or Chick-fil-A where there's, you know, lots and lots of dozens of cars in line. My concern is that with how busy that intersection is with Seven Highway and I-70 coming off that ramp, if these cars get so backed up to where they're coming out the entrance essentially onto Seven Highway, that could cause, to me, it would seem like it would cause issues with the traffic, especially coming off, coming off of I-70. Is there anybody that can talk to that a little more?
Yeah, I believe, I can at least speak to code requirements for stacking for fast food. We'd have a minimum of eight spaces required between the pickup window and the end of the stacking area that doesn't or can't interfere with any driveway movement in the parking lot or anything like that. This, I believe this site plan that I have shown kind of speaks to what that requirement, or how that requirement is met. Oops, sorry. The pickup window with four between the pickup window and the order box. And then there's four after the order box. So in each lane. So code only requires eight. They're providing, I guess, if you want to look at it, their intention is that after the order box, they'll, they'll merge into one during off-hours and then they can also run or have cars waiting in the side lane to, in their peak hours, whenever, whenever there's enough, enough traffic, I guess, to, to accommodate that. So in essence, they have sixteen spaces for their drive-through stacking, whereas code only requires eight. So they're providing more than what code does require. I can only imagine that when it first opens, yes, there will probably be lines, large lines.
My, my, I guess my point is, is looking at this map right here. You can see, yes, the, where the pickup window is, there's a lot of, you know, you're exceeding code, yes. But if you look at to where the ordering screens are, my concern is if you keep going backwards, especially your draw line straight back to where that entrance is off of Seven Highway, there's, it's just the design itself, I, I just see how busy that intersection is. Just living here, having such a popular restaurant that is going to draw in so many people from not just Blue Springs but all around as people are going to want to come to this restaurant for quite a long time, this is going to cause, you know, that's going straight back. It's, it's, you're gonna, I'm afraid you're gonna have cars backed up into that first lane, blocking that, that exit coming off of I-70 and then potentially, you know, going further back with this kind of, just the way that the building is shaped. And I mean, that's just, maybe it's just me, but that's, that's just something that I see being problematic.
Yeah, yeah, that's a valid concern. I, yeah, just stating what code requires, I guess, compared to, yeah, what, what potentially could be in, in the field, I guess, is, yeah, different.
I would like to hear from the applicant too when we get to that point.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be next. Their, their presentation will be next after the questions for staff. Any other questions, Commissioner Honeycutt, at this time?
No, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from the commissioners for staff? Okay. And we'll go ahead and move to the applicant's presentation. For those from the applicant's side who would like to speak, you guys will need to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record. Is there someone from the applicant who'd like to speak?
Yes, my name is Kalen Acres. I believe we also have Chuck Bush on the line as well.
All right.
Okay, okay, this is a court reporter. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, need your name and address.
My name is Kalen, K.A.I.L.E.N., Acres, A.K.E.R.S. Address is two 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 one Rock Road, S.C.H.R.O.C.K., Columbus, Ohio, four three two two nine.
All right. Ms. Acres, would you like to, are you going to be presenting anything or just talking through the applicant, application?
Yeah, I'll just talk through. We don't really have any, anything additional beyond what was included in that packet that you guys already have up on the screen. So I think Nathan covered a good portion of the project. Like he said, there is that existing old restaurant that is on the site currently that will be, yeah, getting demolished along with the pavement that is there and will be replaced with the building as shown. To the one point about the stormwater, I did look at our existing condition survey that we had someone go out in the field and prepare. And you were right, Adam, that I don't believe there are any stormwater inlets on the property currently. So all of that rainwater that falls on that pavement does just sheet drain off either into the northwest South Outer Road right-of-way or onto Highway Seven. So we do have plans, as you noted, to install many inlets, curb inlets and trench drains throughout the property. So that would really reduce the amount of rainwater that is, you're going to be making it out onto the roadways adjacent to the property. And to your point also, we are taking the site from, I believe, about ninety percent impervious surface currently to about seventy-three percent. So there will be a significant increase in the amount of, you know, grass and landscaping on the property. So that should help as well as you noted in your presentation. And then with regard to the queuing of the vehicles, as Nathan stated, we do have stacking space for sixteen vehicles, which is double what is required by the code. And that will really be, I think, probably when the store first opens, that will be the majority of the functionality. It will be probably at those two lanes, the majority. It will be probably at those two lanes the majority of the time. And they do maintain those two lanes, as shown on that plan, throughout the length of that drive-through. So when it's a less busy time, you could have cars queuing in front of both menu boards and then they would merge back into a single lane. But when it is their peak time, they have a side door where they send people out, similar to a Chick-fil-A or something like that, you know, where they maintain both of those lanes at all times during their peak hours. So they would, you know, effectively have 16 queuing spaces before the pickup window. So in addition to that, we do have the architectural renderings, I think, were provided in this package as well. I think those are on page two or three of the package. But so it does have, you know, the classic Whataburger orange, you know, that they are known for with masonry on the bottom and an architectural metal up on the top of the building, which is reflected as well. Those same building materials are used for the trash enclosure to help create a cohesive look for the entire property. If there are any additional questions, I would be happy to answer them, but to speak on behalf of Whataburger for a minute, I know that this is, you probably are aware of some of their other stores that are coming to the area. So with the timing on this one, this would be one of their first stores in the Kansas City area to open. And I know that they're very excited to be coming to your city, coming to Blue Springs and, you know, helping and expanding their, their business out into new territories. So they're very excited to be here and hope to have a great relationship with your city.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Akers. Is there any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
I'd just like to, to say, if Patrick Mahomes of Kansas City Chiefs had anything to do with this, with you coming to the region, then kudos to him. I'm sure the city of Blue Springs cannot wait to savor the palatableness of your burgers. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I was watching the Super Bowl and, and I was rooting for you guys, mostly just because of Whataburger. So, yeah, we, Whataburger is very aware of, of his love for the brand and the spicy ketchup. So I know they're excited too to, to be coming to the area and, and get him some of his spicy ketchup at last.
Thank you, Ms. Cradoff. Any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? All right. Ms. Akers, I had just one quick question. It was kind of tied with the layout and the design. I know one of the requests you guys are making is, has to do with the reduce and easement to that South Outer Road. And, and is there, I'm sure, you know, there's reasons for that and, but can you kind of just tell us, you know, what's there other designs you consider that would, that would have made that easement a little larger? And that, you know, being, being a foot off of the, of the other road is a little bit, looks a little odd, but I'm sure there's a reason for that layout. But can you kind of talk through that and what other design considerations you maybe looked at?
Sure, yeah. Are you referring to the, where we've got that landscape wall on the southwest kind of side of the drive-through?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so this is actually the second iteration of the site. One that we had originally been looking at. We took that to, I believe, to Nathan and possibly also to Adam as well in a preliminary meeting. And one of the items that was discussed in that meeting was the point about the queuing space. And that site, actually, or that layout had less queuing space, less stacking space. So we moved the building kind of as far as we could while still, you know, having the drive-through be behind the building and having the primary face of the building face Highway Seven. So in doing that, just kind of with the shape of the site, it, it does present some challenges in that way. So that was kind of the motivation for putting the building where it's at, was to get more stacking space and get that stacking space a bit further away from the right of way in order to, you know, give as much space as possible. So with that, it really just is kind of the shape of the site creates a lot of limitations on where we can put things. And then additionally, when we brought this project to MODOT, they pointed out that we would need to extend that median that you see along Highway Seven for the frontage of the property. And with that came the median, sidewalk improvement, moving the traffic signal and pedestrian signal for the intersection. And so with adjusting that sidewalk, we actually have a new right-of-way line over in that area. So that ate into some of the spacing between the back of our curb and the public right-of-way as well. And that was something that, you know, once we got into design, realized that that would be another, you know, pinch point as well. So it already was narrower than, you know, the six feet that is elsewhere. And then that kind of stacked on top of it as well. So a lot of it is the unique shape and limitations of the site are really what's driving that pinch point over there. As Nathan pointed out, we do have that landscape wall to help shield those headlights because they would really be shining straight into the eyes of someone on coming north on Outer Road. So that is, you know, Whataburger is absolutely fine with that. You understand that necessity there with just the special conditions of the site.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other final questions for the applicant from the commissioners at this time before we move to witnesses? All right. Thank you, Ms. Akers.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would ask for witnesses in favor of the, of this application. Okay, hearing none. I will ask for witnesses in opposition of this application. Okay. I'll bring it up for any additional or final questions, comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Hose.
Yes, just a quick note. Due to some reasons, I will be unable to vote on this, either one of these items. Just wanted to bring that to attention. I can't disclose which party, but I'm unable to vote on this one.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hose. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion for the amended PUD concept plan.
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval for the Plan Unit Development Concept Plan, PUDC dash 01 dash 21 dash 7646 with four PUD concept plan conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cradoff. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Banks? Sorry? Mr. Banks?
Commissioner Banks, I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
And Chair, I would like to inform you that Planning Commissioner Mitchell Peel has joined us in this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
All righty, so Planning Commissioner Travis Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose?
I abstain.
Commissioner Veal?
Commissioner Veal, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, no.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Chair Graham, or Chair Sanderson, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, that motion is carried with a vote of 10 to one.
All right, thank you. The amended concept plan will be heard at the city council meeting at their Monday, March 1st, 2021, meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion for the preliminary plat.
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for the Plan Unit Develop, Development Concept Plan, PUDC dash 01 dash, I'm, I'm sorry. PP dash 01 dash 21 dash 7647 and the five preliminary plat conditions.
All right, thank you. Have a motion for the preliminary plat. Do I have a second? Commissioner Banks?
This is Commissioner Banks. I second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Susan Stokenberry?
Mr. Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Commissioner Ashley Hose, I abstain.
Commissioner Veal?
Commissioner Veal, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
To clarify, this is the vote for the design or clarify again?
For the preliminary plat. PP 01217647 with five staff conditions.
Commissioner Honeycutt, no.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
And Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, and that motion is carried, is approved with a vote of 10 to, 10 to one.
All right, thank you. This is all the testimony to be heard for these items. If you would like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is item five, preliminary plat, PP 01217642 for Chapman Ridge. And Mr. Jury, it looks like you're presenting this one as well for staff.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson. Planning Commission, for you tonight is a request to approve the preliminary plat for a property located west of southeast Chapman Drive, roughly 250 feet north of Colburn Road. And it's currently an undeveloped piece of ground. The property is roughly 8.25 acres. It is zoned TF PD, which is two-family planned development. This underlying zoning and the PD concept plan for Chapman Ridge was recently approved, reviewed by Planning Commission and approved by city council. The preliminary plat, which I'll pull up here. The preliminary plat matches the Chapman Ridge PD concept plan, meets all conditions set forth by that concept plan, except, except for condition two B, which does require traffic memo to be submitted with the preliminary plat. Public Works does request this condition be amended to allow the traffic memo to be submitted prior to construction of public improvements. All the required improvements, easements, rights of way are shown on this preliminary plat. The required public improvements must be installed prior to final plat approval. Additionally, the proposed building along Rock Garden Lane, the, the second one from the west boundary on the north side of Rock Garden Lane does actually encroach on an existing easement. So this easement has to be vacated prior to final plat approval as well. Also, the proposed lot complies, lots comply with the lot size and width standards set forth by the Chapman Ridge PD concept plan. Staff did review the preliminary plat as well as the street plant or street tree plan provided. And does believe that, under the review criteria, finds that the request is consistent with that criteria. So staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat with five conditions, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Are there any questions for staff by the commissioners at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Jury. I would ask if the applicant would like to make a presentation at this time?
Dan Foster with Schlegel and Associates. I have nothing further to add to what Nathan presented. Just be ready to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Foster, can you state your address as well?
Sure. 14920 West 107th Street, Lenexa, Kansas, 66215.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time from the commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Any additional comments or questions from the commissioners before we move to a vote or a motion? Sorry. Okay, I would then entertain a motion for the preliminary plat. Commissioner Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make it, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, PP dash 01 dash 21 dash 7642, Chapman Ridge, with the five staff conditions.
All right, we have a motion and Commissioner Billups? Would you next?
This is Commissioner Billups. I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Tom Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Commissioner Veal, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Richard Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Mr. Stokenberry, aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. This is all testimony to be heard for this, this item. So if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now.
And Chair, I would, I would like to make a correction with the Whataburger. And Chair, I would, I would like to make a correction with the Whataburger vote. It was actually nine approve, one no, and one abstention. I'm, I am very sorry for that error.
I see. Thank you.
It was passed, though.
All right. All right, the next items on the agenda are items six and seven, PUD Final Plan and Site Plan and Design Review, PDFS zero one two one seven six four five, and Final Plant, P, Final Plat, PF zero one two one seven six two two for the Edison at Blue Springs. And Mr. Wright, I believe you'll be presenting for the city.
Yep, thank you, Chair Sanderson and commissioners. Before you this evening, our request for the approval of a PD Final Plan, Site Plan, Design Review, and a final plat for the Edison at Blue Springs project, which is a proposed apartment complex to be located at 101 Northwest Mock Avenue. The subject property was rezoned to MF-18 PD, which is High-Density Multi-Family Planned Development by the city council back on January 4th of this year, and covers approximately 10.4 acres. The final plan is in substantial compliance with the approved concept plan and includes 198 units, apartment units, and six buildings with a central clubhouse and green spaces. All building type standards for the apartment complex have been met with the exception of those items that were previously modified under the concept plan related to the building, overall unit density for the subject property, as well as the number of units per floor in each building. Access to the site will be provided by a single point of access from Mock Avenue, which does meet the minimum requirements per the site, for the traffic study for the site, as well as fire code access. Minimum parking standards have been met with 367 spaces provided on the property, as well as, as part of that 367 spaces, there are 36 garage spaces as well. Bike parking has also been met with bike racks at each apartment building, as well as the clubhouse. Final architectural elevations have been provided in the packet. There are three different building types. Each include three-story buildings ranging from 27 units to 36 units. Each building will include three building entrances, one of which will access the centralized green space, and then the other two entrances will access the parking areas along the perimeter of the site. Building entrances include partially covered porch stoops with glass entry doors. And then all entrances also connect to the internal sidewalk system and parking areas with a minimum six-foot sidewalk requirement, which meets the pedestrian access requirements for the site. Exterior building materials include a mix of stone veneer, stucco, and cement board siding in both lap style and battened style. Variations in building design and four-sided architectural design have been accomplished through building massing and projections, as well as each unit includes a balcony or patio. Other architectural design interests have been provided through entryways, windows, as well as variations in colors and materials on the building. Roofing materials also include asphalt shingles, as well as dormers on both sides of the primary facades. The accessory buildings, including the clubhouse, match the materials that are provided on the buildings, as well as the detached garages, trash enclosures, and the mail kiosk also have the same building materials that complement and match the primary buildings. A detailed landscape plan has been provided in the packet, which the site does meet the minimum landscaping requirements for the site. And the site overall includes 147 more plant units than required by code. The only buffer in which a reduction is requested is along the north buffer. A reduced buffer was approved as part of the concept plan from a 25-foot buffer to a 10-foot buffer. And as part of that, as part of the final landscape plan, the applicant is requesting to reduce the total number of plant units there. However, to make up for the loss of plant units there, they have added additional buffering to all the other buffers, as well as the open space, which makes them exceed the total amount of plant units required for the site. Staff does believe that that reduction in plant units along I-70 is warranted due to the topography change between the site and I-70, as well as there is quite a bit of natural vegetation in the right-of-way that provides some additional buffering. In addition to the clubhouse, other onsite amenities are shown on the site, are shown on the landscape plan, including an outdoor pool, as well as two dog parks, and multiple outdoor gathering areas with outdoor seating, grills, and fire pits. A monument sign is proposed at the main entrance off of Mock Avenue. Conceptual design has been provided on the landscape plan as well. As part of the approval of the concept, or the final plan, the existing St. Mary's Medical Center monument sign that is on the property will need to be removed, as the sign is non-conforming. And that is part of a code requirement that anytime there's any non-conforming signage on a site, prior to it being developed or redeveloped, that signage be removed. So staff has included a condition as part of the final plan approval, that the sign be removed prior to occupancy of the apartment complex. The last item is the final plat for the Edison at Blue Springs, which is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat that was approved by the Council, or Planning Commission, back in December of 2020. The only public improvement for the site is a five-foot sidewalk along the north side of Mock Avenue. In addition to public improvements, there will also be a detention pond that will be provided at the southwest corner of the property, and also a small piece of right-of-way is being dedicated at the southwest corner of the property as well. Staff recommends approval of the PD Final Plan, Site Plan, Design Review with three conditions, and approval of the final plat with three conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any questions for Mr. Wright at this time from Okay, thank you. If there is anybody from the applicant who would like to speak at this time and make a presentation, they can do so now.
Sure, thank you, Chair Sanderson. This is Tim Homberg with NSPJ Architects. Matt gave a pretty comprehensive review, and obviously, our final plan is pretty much verbatim from our concept plan. We worked really hard with staff to kind of get it to the point. So we're really, really just waiting here to accept any questions.
Okay, Mr. Homberg, could you provide your address as well?
Yes, Tim Homberg, H-O-M-B-U-R-G with NSPJ Architects, 3515 West 75th Street, Prairie Village, Kansas, 66208.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions at this time for the applicant from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Homberg. All right, any other final comments or questions from the commissioners before we ask for a motion? Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask, Mr. Wright, I didn't see any dimensions on the Edison sign. How big is that monument sign?
We didn't actually ask for dimensions on that. We just asked for a conceptual, kind of a generic idea of what the sign would look like. We haven't gotten into the specifics in terms of the size of the sign. As long as it meets sign code, it would be reviewed administratively through the sign permitting process.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Chair.
You're very welcome. Any other questions or comments at this time from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Then I would ask for a motion for the PD Final Plan, Site Plan, and Design Review. Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, for Plan Development, Final Plan, PDFS zero one twenty-one, seven six four five, with the three conditions to be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Veal.
I would like to second that motion.
All right, thank you. Have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ashley Hose.
Planning Commissioner Ashley Hose, aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Commissioner Veal, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Peel. Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Richard Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. I would now ask for a motion on the final plat. Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, Chair. I move that final plan, PF zero one two one seven six two two for Edison, with the three conditions to be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Peel. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Chair.
Commissioner Veal.
I would like to second that motion.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Byron Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Richard Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Commissioner Stokenberry, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Commissioner Hose, aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Commissioner Veal, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, recommendation has been approved.
All righty, the final plat will be heard by the city council at their Monday, March 1st, 2021, meeting at 6:00 PM. This is all the testimony to be heard on this item, and if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to other business. Mr. Wright, are you presenting Development Activity Report?
Yes, I'll bring that up on the screen here. Yeah, the January 2021 Development Activity Report was included in the packet. We hope to have the next, the February Development Report for the next agenda. But January 20, January numbers, we had 19 single-family detached homes permitted. No other, no other development for residential last month. A number of other building permits were issued for residential additions, alterations, and various commercial permits, which totaled 103 permits. And then we did approve four signed permits, all temporary. And then an administrative site plan design review was approved last month for 905 Southeast Grace Circle, which, if you're not familiar with that, that is on the north side of AA Highway, kind of south of the Blue Springs Bus Barn area, just south of 40 Highway. And that's a kind of a light industrial cul-de-sac back where Van Duit used to be. And what they are proposing there is a little under 12,000 square foot construction contractor office building. So that will be starting construction here soon. So if you see anything down in that area, that's what that is for. And that is it for the Development Activity Report. We will have a meeting on Monday, March 8th, which will include the Phillips 66 that was continued this evening, as well as a couple of other applications that we have received. So look forward to seeing everybody again on March 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any other business from the commissioners?
Chair, if the commission would please stay on the, on the line once the meeting is adjourned, I would need to talk with you.
All right, will do. Okay, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Peel.
Salute, Chair.
And ask for a second?
Mr. Banks seconds the motion to adjourn.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. So other than the commissioners who, please stay on the line. Everybody else, please hang up by hitting the red phone icon. Have a good evening. Thank you.